And, and Miss Mika? I didn't hear it once, I heard it three times in ten years. This department will have to march into the shadows.
Well, we're there now. Come on, huh? She has approached it. Started shaking the tree. You guys need, uh...
Yeah.
Me. We're there. The valley slowly arrived to a... Yeah. Now, my story's... Matt Watts. Urgent to the apartment. It's an overreacher.
Of course it's an overreacher.
So we have to pay him extra.
Thank you.
Higher. Higher.
Yeah.
We have... This works.
A great thing that we're back.
I don't like having those...
They're all around us now.
I don't think...
Ashland's on the...
They're there.
Yeah. So...
Yeah, make sure it works. Make sure that you need to be here a two-time.
Or get me together and say, hey, we're here. How much is it gonna cost us for a council? And how you had to hire a person now.
No, it's gonna happen.
It is.
And I'm ready. He said, "I'm ready for it."
He's there.
We probably have them...
They claim this town is too big. They say it's too big.
Oh, God.
Too big. Well, they're gonna hire more.
More?
If our area was five, now there's six.
See, that helps.
Hire some more.
Other help?
Cause they do that. Whether you read them...
That could be morphed into the regional concept. And then if that happens, then Prescott's coming on board.
They're there. We're there. We need to make it.
Yeah. Well, it's tough.
More trying.
That's a big old... Old venture. Yes.
What can you please achieve? Read into that. You see this?
I don't know.
Really? What's starting to happen?
What is an option?
How are you?
Right.
Bruce would know. What... What's the base salary for a person? The best salary?
Base.
Base?
Base.
Come on, you research stuff like that all the time. You say probably sixty. Sixty-five. Cause he doesn't have something else. That's sheriff's pay.
It's a lot more. Sheriff's. And that's what's gonna happen. So when they're robbing from us. They're gonna rob from them when we negotiate more.
Yes.
Our... They want... They want... They just basically...
Bugs are...
Bugs around.
The tree stalls.
In this society today with the younger group of kids, the people that we have working, that's all. You don't allow them to be able to blow out the trees. Come on, whatever. It's my vote.
There you go.
You want the money?
Problem.
Do it. You want the money? So you're making two more dollars on that grant.
Less... Less money.
They instinct. They wanna get that thirteen hundred dollars a week or whatever it is cash. That's not what they're... Last three dollars. Back, back, back. They just wanted the cash. No help benefits. Yeah.
Live for the moment. Did I think of long-term?
Nope.
Live for the moment. And it's probably the Gen Z.
And that's what it is. It's that generation.
Exactly. Generation. And plus, they... They wanna work on it. Yeah.
Yeah, they wanna follow the nature. You're not following it.
They wanna be able to be removed or wanna be able to... Let them go as they please. You know, it's just a totally different...
No work ethic. Totally different mindset.
It's... Yes. Yes. There's no discipline.
You can't. You gotta make... If you do discipline, you gotta make sure that you're right. Are you documented? And everything? Go to seven, eight, nine, like, go do that. You can't say that. I didn't know you. We didn't... Oh, my God. You've been getting written out. There'll be a girl off this... Then you're gonna say, "Boo, boo." Oh, trust me, no. That's the unfortunate part today.
I think initially it would be full circle.
Oh, it's gonna come back. It's gonna bite us.
Oh, it's gonna bite us.
It's coming. We're seeing it now.
Wait till these Gen Zs get to be fifty. Fifty, sixty years old. And they got nothing. For retirement. And they're gonna wonder why.
Yep. They're surprised when they don't understand economics.
No. Not much they understand, very.
All right.
But you can't tell them anything. No, they know. They know what? Just ask them.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Monday, June 24th, 2024 City Council meeting. Role call, all councilors are present. For invocation and inspirational thought, would somebody like to share that with us this evening? Sure.
Please join me in being the attitude of prayer. We pray for our country at all times, that all citizens are safe, healthy, and happy. We pray for wisdom for all those who guide and govern. Help this government body in every situation to know and to do the things that are right and just with soundness of judgment in making vital decisions. We pray for the peacemakers, that Holy Life-Giving Spirit may ever dwell in their hearts and the barriers of fear, suspicion, and hatred may fall. Thus, we pray to the Holy Father. Amen.
Amen.
Pardon me, but please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number four on the agenda is our Declaration of Any Conflict of Interest. Is there anyone on council that has a conflict or...
Yes, Madam Mayor, I actually do. I sit on the Personnel Committee for the City of Caribou. And we are getting ready to go into negotiations with the CFD. I am actually an honorary member of the CFD, after serving there for fourteen years. And to be in all honesty, I believe it could be considered a conflict of interest. And I would like to bring that up. I don't want any perception felt, no matter what the outcome is in negotiations. And I feel it's the honest thing to do. It could be considered a conflict of interest. And I'm just bringing that to your attention.
Thank you very much. Any other conflicts of interest that anyone would like to declare this evening? Okay. Item number five on the agenda is public forum. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak? Please come on up and state your name and address.
My name is Bruce Hegelstein. I live here in Caribou on Coolidge Avenue. I'm here tonight to follow up on last month's council meeting concerning blight. During that meeting, the council gave okay to the city manager to be tougher on the properties in question. My question to you folks, it's been a month. Haven't heard a thing, haven't seen anything in the paper. My question is, what has been done? The city admitted at that time last month that it has been lax in enforcing the current ordinances on the books. I know that letters have been sent out. Citizens have been fighting this for years. And it appears that nothing is happening. It's getting worse. You all know about it. You had a lot of discussion last month about it. And we're really hoping to get the wheels turning here and get something done. We know that letters have been sent. What happens if they don't follow the instructions on the letter? Or even if the letter is read or received? What's Plan B? What's gonna happen? What is the timeline? We need to get this addressed within the city. And the sooner the better. A lot of the citizens... We have had enough lip service on this. And it's time for action now to address these properties, get them cleaned up, hold the owners responsible for their actions or lack thereof, actions, on their part. It is noted on this meeting's agenda that there is no mention of this subject. I know it's budget time and so forth, but this blight thing, we can't sweep it under the rug. It's gotta be addressed. And it's gotta be addressed now. Getting sick and tired of this. My feeling is the blight issue should be put on every month's agenda for subject matter to be talked about until all these properties are addressed and we have something going on to clean it up and get it taken care of. And I'm not the only one that feels that way. This also would make it transparent to the citizens of Caribou as to what is going on to address this issue. An idea that I had is it's getting close to a tax time for tax bills to go out. What if we know we have ordinances on the books for responsibilities of homeowners on what they're responsible for, whether it's grass or trash or whatever? Why don't we send a letter and send a copy of those ordinances with every tax bill to every person that pays taxes here within the city? True, they may not read it. They just throw it away. But at least it makes an effort to make people aware of what their responsibilities are as a homeowner. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak? Danielle, I forgot to ask you if anyone had sent anything in. Okay, thank you. Okay. Item number six, the minutes. And we don't have any minutes to share this evening, correct? Penny? Okay. Item number seven on the agenda was our plan to recognize Chief Gehagen for his 51 years of service. Unfortunately, he could not be here this evening, so we will definitely plan to do that at a later date. Item number eight on our agenda is our public hearings and possible action items. Under that, we have several charter amendments that we will have public hearings for this evening. So we will start with ordinance three of the 2024 series, an ordinance amending the municipal budget process. And this is for the expense budget. And this is on pages six and seven of the packet. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:09 PM. Right. Okay. Let's see. There it is. Okay. Does anybody have anything that they would like to say on this? Anyone from the public? Anyone from the council who wishes to speak on this ordinance? I'm not gonna read the entire ordinance. Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:10 PM. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we accept ordinance three of the 2024 series as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, the next public hearing will be for ordinance four of the 2024 series, an ordinance amending the municipal budget process under the capital budget. This is on pages eight and nine of your packet. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:11 PM. And again, this one is on the capital expense. So basically, just clarifying what constitutes a capital expense. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Anyone from the council? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:11 PM.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we accept ordinance four of the 2024 series as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next public hearing will be on ordinance five of the 2024 series. This is an ordinance amending the municipal budget process under the enterprise accounts. This is on pages 10 and 11 of your packet. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:12 PM. And this ordinance is clarifying the funding and function of enterprise accounts in the municipality. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Anyone on the council who has any questions? Comments? Go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:13 PM. What are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion that we accept ordinance number five as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next ordinance is ordinance six of the 2024 series, an ordinance to clarify how meeting attendance is excused. This is on pages 12 and 13 of your packet. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:13 PM. And this ordinance is amending the city charter to clarify the process for city councilor excusal from meeting attendance. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:14 PM. What are the wishes of the council?
Move to accept the ordinance presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further comments? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And our final public hearing for the evening is ordinance seven of the 2024 series, an ordinance to implement a procedure for the adoption of a counselor code of conduct. This is on pages 14 to 17 of your packets. Go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:15 PM. Uh, yes.
I know this is completely no drafted ordinance, correct?
I believe, yes. Most of this is brand new.
I mean, I'm just wondering how it is.
It's just, it's pulled from several other communities. So the committee looked at several different communities and what they had for a code of conduct and incorporated elements of that into this. And what's put in there for a code of conduct, that isn't really part of the ordinance. That would be something that each council could adopt at the beginning of the year. But you have your three members here and they can talk about it. But that was the research that I did for our, for the committee.
How's it gonna go on the... I mean, just wondering how it's gonna go on the ballot. It's gonna be simple, you know?
Yeah, because this, the code of conduct isn't part of that. It's just gonna be this part here. You know, that's underlined and, yeah.
Oh, break this, this, I understand.
Does anybody from the committee wanna speak on that briefly?
Yeah, I can. Yeah.
Thank you.
So basically, 14 and 15 is what is going on the ballot, I believe, if that's correct. Penny? So, and then each year, we would adopt as a council, the code of conduct as a council. We would agree to that as a council. And so this is just a sample that we just took from looking at other localities and areas here in the state, taking just things that we thought were kind of commonplace and themes that we saw that kind of carried through other areas. So we looked at those and kind of just gave an example of what that might look like. But obviously, we could look at things that made sense to us as a council and just agreed to that altogether. And we would all just sign that each year.
Perfect.
Thank you. Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments, questions? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:17 PM. What are the wishes of the council?
Introduce their motion to accept the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Item number nine is reports by staff and committees. And nine A is the May financial report. We have Carl here to give us that report. Thank you, Carl.
Evening, Mayor, Madam Mayor, councilors, manager. The narrative is on page 18. I'll be starting on page 19. The May financials, total assets ending May 31st, 2024 is $10,550,991.17. Cash on hand, $5,046,045.09. About three-quarters of the way down the page, we have the 2024 tax receivables. We collected $41,513.49. We're at a total of prepayments for 2024 commitment at $279,848.55. That's about $10,700 higher than last year through May. About 4% higher collected in prepayments compared to last year. On the next page, the liabilities ending May 31st are at $7,301,324.33. Fund balance is over on page 23 at the bottom of the page. The fund balance for the end of the month was $3,248,774.84. Moving over to the expenses on page 26. So our May expenses for the month came in at $781,507.60. We're at 31% of our overall budget for the first five months. That's about 10.5% less than our budget. But if you look at the line right above that, line 85 under capital improvements, that's 1.244,980. And we are at $1,289,226 on the budget. So if we actually expensed our capital, we would be $44,247 under budget. So that tells me that we're pretty much right on if we accept the total capital improvements that will, should be expended when we do commitment. Moving over to revenue on page 31. Our revenues for the month came in at $680,153.27. And we're at 24.6% of our budget. That's about 17.1% down. But like I alluded to the last couple of months, once we hit commitment and have our income come from property tax revenue, that should fall right into line. Exises for the month came in at $173,000. And last month, I estimated at $185,000. So it was like $12,000 under. But still, we are over budget for the month at 1.1%. Our year-to-date total, we're at $671,736.20. Revenue sharing came in really good for us for May, $245,683.60, putting our year-to-date total at $831,564.44. We're only under budget by nine tenths of a percent, or about $18,000. Then moving over to page 36. It's just a snapshot of our revenue. We're about $62,000 above what we planned through the first five months, about 17%. Even though we're under budget, the falls in line was the historic data from previous years. That's all I had, unless anyone had any questions.
Buddy?
Sounds like we're sitting pretty good.
Yep.
I mean, revenue's up, expenses are down. But the expenses, of course, probably contributed to the unfilled positions. I mean, I keep going back to that, but would you...
Yeah, I like I said, we're only 44, technically only $44,000 under budget.
Yeah.
If we were to expense all the capital.
Yeah. Looks good.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Carl.
Motion to accept the May financial report.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number nine B is the city manager's report.
So our Riverfront Power projects, the steam plant Circla project mobilization has started, and they hope to begin cleanup in August and work until October. The broadband initiative, Charter Spectrum, reports that they are in the design process and also working to secure pole permits for the project. Events and marketing, Thursday's on Sweden Street has been very well attended. The next one is June 11th, 6 to 9 PM.
July.
Excuse me, did I say June? Yeah, July 11th, 6 to 9 PM. So blight cleanup, the letters went out. It's not on here. But the letters went out and they have until June 28th, which is Friday, to comply with the letters. We got a list of rubbish haulers from the clerk because we can contact, I've given them to the new code enforcement officer for him to reach out to get quotes for the properties that need to be cleaned up by the 28th. We can only contract with people who can haul rubbish in Caribou, so there's no sense in advertising because it only goes to the ones that can operate anyway. And so the notices of violation include language from our ordinance that if they don't comply, that the city is allowed to clean up the mess and charge that back to them plus 10% for administrative costs. Our code enforcement officer did ride by everything today. And he also rode by my new list of properties. And he has... new list of properties and he has, um, composed some other notices of violation, which I wasn't able to review, to send out today. But those will be going out as well. I made a note of your suggestions to make blight an, an agenda item. I mean, I can pop it out bigger on the manager's report. Um, and a tax bill insert with the ordinances related to blight, I've put that here to consider also. We do have the opportunity to put inserts in tax bills. We put them, they can be printed when our tax bills are printed, they can be put on colored paper. I don't know if that will make it any easier for people to see, but, um, that is something that, um, we could elect to do. The Caribou Development Committee, uh, they met on June nineteenth and they are planning a work session with other committees like they did in January for the evening of July eighteenth, and more details will be forthcoming on that. Uh, fire station renovations, the fire chief, the special projects coordinator and I met this past week to go over the fire station work plans and I have contacted our municipal buildings committee for them to meet, to go over this project as well. So, as a reminder, we have funds that were put aside in capital, we have funds that came from County ARPA, and we also have a congressionally directed spending request that are for all of these, um, projects at the fire station. The police station, you do have additional information in the city manager's report as an attachment. The comprehensive plan update, the planning board has drafts of several sections that have been completed by our special projects coordinator. Fifteen Prospect Street, um, time given by the court runs out on July first, so we will, be dealing with that at that time. Age-friendly efforts, the next meeting is June twenty-fifth at two P. M. at the library and all are invited. Personnel changes, our new code enforcement officer has started his position and our new assistant city clerk has started her position as well. The DOT Village Partnership Initiative, a public meeting was held on June seventeenth. Cary Medical Center, uh, the hundredth anniversary is ongoing. So, also in the city manager's report, there is an update here. Oh, Spectrum Audio isn't working apparently. Thanks.
That's surprise.
So, the update on the police station project, which is, uh, in your packet, Artifacts and Mayans Woodward have been working on producing a police station design that will fit the original ten million dollar budget. This is meant going back to a one-story design. Blackstone Land Surveying is working on a description of the parcel where the police station will be placed. This is needed for the environmental review process. The parcel where the police station will be located is a tax-acquired property acquired through the automatic lien foreclosure process for twenty fourteen property tax liens. This presents new challenges considering the Supreme Court of the United States decision in the Tyler versus Hennepin County decision last year. We have received information from legal counsel that since this was acquired in twenty sixteen, the time for challenging the foreclosure of the tax lien has expired. The schematic updates are on the following three pages along with the new estimated price of nine million, five hundred, six thousand, nine hundred dollars. So, that is on, in the packet if someone's interested. If someone, um, wants a copy, we can certainly print that for them.
Will that be posted on the public website soon?
Yep, it will. I guess I thought I had already had it on there, but if it's not on there, I can.
May I ask a question on the blight cleanup? I wonder if we could have a, like a, a status update, like spreadsheet, that we can keep track, like every meeting, to get a status of each of the properties as they're listed out? You know, what the status is, you know, whether a letter's been sent, whether it's been cleaned up and, and all of that. And I think that would keep the visibility on it and help it, keep us informed too, the status of things.
Yep, we can definitely do that.
I know there's a lot of them, but the last time I looked, the last time I looked, they were not located in a list in any one given place, right?
No, they, they haven't been.
So, that would be very helpful.
I think that that is something that our new code officer is working on. We were talking about that when, um, when I had worked in code enforcement prior to two thousand and eighteen, when we got a new code enforcement officer. I actually kept mine in an Excel spreadsheet because it was easier actually to produce letters because I could just, uh, produce the letters from the spreadsheet and then I could use the fields, like to pop in the dates, when was the last time I talked to someone, what the phone number was, when they had agreed to, um, do something so that I could, you know, when I was going back through them, I could say, okay, well, I talked to you on this date, you said you'd have something done by that date. The previous code officer didn't, um, do things that way, but, um, I know that our new code enforcement officer and I have talked about, you know, different ways that we can, um, can tackle this, maybe so that, um, he and I, and then also Tony Michaud, who works in code enforcement, would have access to it. So, if someone calls in and, and maybe, um, Mr. Gibson isn't available, then we can check that and say, okay, thanks for calling in, we see that you have an outstanding notice, you know, we'll, you know. That's what we did before, um, Tony and I both have, we have access to a public drive and so, that way, if someone, you know, called about something, we could just pull down the spreadsheet and you could see what, see what that was. Mr. Gibson is also looking at, um, there are different software programs that would even make that public facing so that if someone wanted to go in and check the status themselves, they could do that. And so, we haven't started, we haven't got into it deep enough to know, like, what does that cost, you know, how much work that takes for, I'm not a technology person, I think that is very widely known. So, you know, I don't know what it would take to get that onto, like, the website or something that someone can use, but.
I would think even on the website, we could do, even if it was once a month, just take, and I think even for the council's purposes, if we could just get maybe something with a few columns on it, we don't need that every, you know, tiny detail, but if we had, this is a property, this is what happened, this is when they have to take action by, kind of thing, so we could see, and then has action been taken? We could get that at the meetings, but maybe once a month, put something on the website that shows that.
I mean, we do that with the grant spreadsheet and so that's like the next thing in, in our manager's report. This is something that we do every month too, is, and this really originated from the public because the public was saying, you have this money, why aren't you doing anything? But what they don't realize is, we don't have the money. Like, we have to go through all of this environmental work and, um, a lot of paperwork and, and things, these funds don't get released to us. So, that's why we came up with this, so that people can see, okay, how much it, how much is the grant for, but where are we in the process? So, we could even do something that's kind of similar, you know, to that.
I think just to bring up another point too, due to the fact that now we have a code enforcement officer, we just recently hired, just recently hired, it's gonna make a big difference. Yes, we have been neglecting, it has been neglected, but because of lack of staff and lack of ability to address these issues, but now we have somebody, um, that can do it and he's a very motivated individual, um, so I think we should see, especially, I mean, I won't, I'll say the next year, there's gonna be some changes and that, uh, and I think that we're all in agreement with that, that we're not neglecting anything as a council, it's just that, um, there's a process we have to go through, which we learned with Fifteen Prospect Street, okay? And it, uh, so now I would think that we have a person that can actually address things better, I think you're gonna see a big difference. I feel comfortable with it.
I do too.
I mean, you know, I.
I really do.
Most positive approach we've had in a long time, so.
Yeah, and he just came on board.
Yeah, he just.
Now that he's getting his feet under him, I do think we'll see something happening here.
And I think he's also trying to, um, ha, you know, have an approach to find out, like, what tools we have, that they might have available to them, like if they, if they might qualify for some help from somewhere to address these issues, like ACAP has different programs to fix up properties, so if it's a senior that maybe can't afford to fix up, now this isn't trash and things, this is, you know, more like life safety things, that they might be able to do that. So, he's trying to take a holistic approach to all of this.
I like it because, oh.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I like it because that's one of my priorities, two big priorities we do at the beginning of the year. One of mine is blight removals, so please remove, and probably most everybody.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think everyone had that on their list.
I think on the top of the list, so.
So, if you could go back to the police station design?
Yep, sure.
I'd have a couple of questions and observations on it I wanted to share. The first is, if you go back to the, the site plan, I noticed that the front of this is elevate, is oriented toward the south, is that correct?
Yes, so this is gonna be the south, like where people are gonna come in.
Wouldn't it make better sense to flip it the other way so that the front is on Fort Street where everybody's coming in? Or, or orient it toward Route One?
Well, see, you're not gonna have any access from those places. Like, your access is going to be off of Birdseye.
Always.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, if you flipped it the other way, you can't access it from Fort Street, you'd have to come down Birdseye.
Yes.
Right.
Anyway, and so that's why they oriented it that way.
Yes.
Also, I mean, this is one thing I kept telling them is, you know, on the south side, you can get some sun, so why not have, like, the nice offices on the front, you know, where the guys are gonna be working and.
Beautiful front, nobody's gonna be able to see it.
And, um.
Do you think you'll be able to see it coming, coming north on Route One? Are you gonna be able to see up over that?
That, you know, that I don't know, you know? I mean, I don't know if you'll just see.
See, watch all the vegetation there when it's cleaned out, it's kind of flattened out there, I think you will.
Maybe you can.
Depends on how far down they put it. It's quite a ways down.
Yeah, well, this, this has it pretty close up to, like, the Life by Design building.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Because of the elevation. See, before it was gonna be more in the corner when it was going to be two floors because you have that grade change there, which made it, um, easy to have a daylight basement, but you can't really have that now because of cost, so they had to move it on the lot to, to put it somewhere that made sense, so you wouldn't have to spend a lot of money filling in something.
So, we can't, we cannot access from Fort Street, we've been told that.
You, you can come down farther on the lot from Fort Street, but Presque Isle is a definite no, so, um.
Fort Street, I think it's because of the terrain also.
Yes.
I believe there was something about the terrain there and the, uh, the scope, the landscape there, uh, would make it pretty well impossible. That, uh, Birdseye, because of the existing drive that's there, uh, was gonna make it a lot easier with having to rebuild the street, um, and to keep the cost kind of minimal, which kind of all makes sense.
Yeah.
Trying to keep in the ten million dollar price tag there.
Well, I, I know, it's, it's tough to fit everything we want into the ten million dollar price. Which is another question I have, I, I think I've asked before, do we have an accounting of, like, the, what we estimate the city cost to be? Because there are three elements of the total project cost, right? This cost estimate that Artifacts has given us, nine point five, but there's also the city's costs that aren't necessarily covered in that estimate, as well as whatever contingency we're gonna put on it. Have all those numbers been worked out yet?
Um, that's a question I can ask them. I mean, I have, we have this from them.
Will, will they be the ones to develop the city costs? Or will that be the city staff to do that?
I can ask them what they have included first and then go from there, right?
And remember, we do have the two point five million congressionally directed funds too.
Yeah.
And also believe in sitting through the, uh, discussions in our committee, okay? Our goal is not to, uh, enhance that budget by any more than the ten million dollars. So, if you're assuming there's gonna be some, like, three or four million dollar additional increase to the city, not our goal. I mean, we're gonna have this pretty well locked down, I mean, it, uh, that's, that's.
Well, I think that was the agreement of the council, that we were gonna stick with a ten million dollar total.
Correct.
And the two point five is gonna reduce that burden of that loan from two point five to seven point five, if I done my math right. So, we've, so we all agree on that.
Right.
But there is that element of city cost that I'm concerned about, that we need to get that nailed down, because there's a whole section in the contract, section five, that lays out all the things that the city's responsible for, and I haven't heard anything about that, uh, or what it might cost or when we might be doing it and all that.
I think one of the biggest players is gonna be, uh, is gonna come into play here when we actually go to bid on this, on this, uh, structure, um, and everything that's gonna be involved with it. And then, of course, at that time, we'll have the right to refuse bids or accept bids, um, then we'll actually get a truer understanding. A lot of this right now is speculation. I mean, it's like anytime you, you build something, you take somebody's, others' cost estimate and this and that, a lot of it's speculation, which can go one way or the other. And for us to estimate what the actual cost will be to, to do this and that, until we actually go to bid, uh, with the true specifications for the whole project, it's gonna be kind of hard, I think, to tell. I mean, um, you know, then we'll be able to dissect it more, you know, and, uh, but for us right now to go out and say, try to dissect it and micromanage it more, it's not gonna happen.
Well, I think that's why you carry your contingency. That's, that's the, exactly the purpose of a contingency, to, to plan for those unknowns and to plan for the fact that those estimates that are coming in are rough estimates and they have an error of twenty percent sometimes. So, the city ought to be maintaining for itself ten to fifteen percent contingency on this project, the total project cost, in my opinion. That's how it's usually done, as far as I know. So, one of the other things I noticed is on, I, the, the chief's private toilet really bothers me. I don't see the need for that. I think that's a, a luxury that we could do away with. I'm not sure about the use of such things as, like, the allied office, the bunk room, there's a soft interview room, a social worker room, these are all, like, spaces that seem to me like undefined, and I'd like to have more clarity on whether we really need those. Something, other things that I noticed, that there are only three holding cells.
There needs to be four.
What's that?
There needs to be four.
There needs to be four?
Right now, they have four. One's a male, one's a female, needs to have a juvie. So, if we have two males and a female, we, and they get a juvenile, where are they gonna put the juvenile?
We only need three cells though, technically, I believe. It doesn't need to be four. And the social worker room and some of those things, that was based on some best practices. If, um, Penny and Chief Gehigan did present on that a couple of times, maybe it was before you were on the council, but, um, some things that most newly updated stations have those spaces, um, for folks to be able to come in.
Well, I think we're at a point where we're really gonna have to sharpen our pencil and think long and hard about what we really need and what are nice to have.
But keep in mind, those spaces could be renamed something, if we needed that for something else, it certainly could be, but those are based on best practices.
So, there are four s, uh, holding cells, I'm not sure which one you didn't see. So, there's like, you see at the top large, holding and hearing, so that, that one's just a bigger one. Can you just show me the other one real quick? Yep.
Okay.
So, we, so we got four.
I'll just come around, Penny.
Excuse me, John.
Something.
It's very hard to see on the little ones.
Oh, because of the large holding and the juvenile and interview area.
Two, three.
Something I might suggest, Madam Mayor, is that, that if there's questions about the existing floor plan by councilors, I would suggest that you maybe make a list, okay? And then they could be presented to the committee, um, then we could dissect them, um, and then bring them back with the correct answers. Uh, okay, the chief's toilet, yeah, okay, I get that, okay? Uh, but if there's any other thing that's rather significant, I think that'd be the, the most constructive way to do it, um, only because it would save some time and then, uh, 'cause we're gonna be having more presentations on this, um, so then we can, uh, really look at them in more detailed, more detail, um, and that, that's what I would suggest. If you have any questions or anything to do with existing floor plan, um, then I would suggest you make a list, um, and bring it, uh, uh, bring it to Courtney.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then we could, uh, look it over and go from there.
So, you don't want any more questions about the police station tonight?
I'm saying if you have any questions, okay, about the existing floor plan or anything to do with it, what I'm saying is, why don't you make a list, okay, and bring them to Courtney, then we can look at them, because otherwise, we're gonna sit here all night and we're gonna debate this, okay?
We're not debating, we're just asking.
Well, first off, okay, um, and I won't say it now, but I, uh, agree that, uh, these questions are relevant and they need to be debated, okay? But I also believe that, um, we need to remember about our conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest, what would that be?
I believe that you have a potential conflict of interest in this matter.
No, I don't.
I think you do.
Well, that's your opinion, John.
That's my opinion and my, and I'm gifted to it. But now, only thing I'm asking is, for the benefit of. But now, only thing I'm asking is for the benefit of maintaining a constructive conversation, okay? Without the fact that our architects aren't here, we could take your, take all the comments and everything, put them in a list, so then when our architects come back up, we can address this with them. We can't address, you know, certain things. I mean, you know, it, so, and it'd be nice to have them in writing because without having to make off-the-wall comments here about certain things. I mean, it, I mean, I'm not an architect. I didn't design this building. I looked at the existing floor plan and I said, well, okay, yeah, I guess so, you know, but there's things like chief's toilet. Well, yeah, I, I agree with that. I mean, I saw the original design and more toilets and bathrooms in it. I couldn't believe it. And the first thing I said was, this is crazy, you know? So, but I think to be constructive about the matter, I think that's the best way to do it. Then we can readjust them with, with the architects, where we're paying money to answer these questions, you know? I don't know.
I think it would be helpful to have a list because that way we do have everything organized. I agree with that. I think a list is great. Not that questions aren't welcome for...
No.
They certainly are. I just think it might be a little bit easier to have some lists that we can work off.
I just want to say one thing here.
Yeah, sure.
I'll just go on. Thank you for getting this information to all of us in the public. I know it's been a lot of work. Please, under that price point, and we have a little bit of a cushion, because I think at the beginning, we were like, whoa, the first numbers that were thrown out there.
Oh, they're crazy.
Yeah.
It was like it wasn't gonna happen.
No, no, it wasn't gonna happen.
It's taken us a long time to get to this point and to this number.
That's all I have to say.
Well, I think, you know, as I said before, I think at the, at this stage in the, in the project, it's real, okay? We're spending money and we're about to spend a lot of money. And I think it's important for the full council, all members of the council, to be fully informed and fully engaged and use opportunities like this to ask the questions, have the discussion, make some decisions going forward and not deal with a committee that's off to the side and that is just another link in a conversation that we don't really need to have. I, I still struggle to understand what the purpose of the committee is today.
Well, I understand that you don't understand that, but at the same time, the committee was established for a purpose and the committee is still established and it's on our list of committees for the 2024 season. So it's, it's a committee that's going to be running through this year at least.
Yeah, and, you know, looking back at the, like, the meeting packet and the meeting minutes and the video on that April 20th meeting, 2021, when the committee was established, its stated purpose was to focus on the evaluation of the police station and getting a ballot measure prepared for the November election. And that purpose was fulfilled in November of 2021. So I don't understand why we still have a committee that's doing a go-between between the manager and the rest of the council, the majority of the council, and basically being, you know, that, that gateway. I don't think we need a gateway. I think we all need to be fully informed and fully engaged as we go forward.
I think we are making sure that you are fully informed and that's why we have things in the packet right now and that's why we're saying if you have questions or concerns or comments, please make sure that we have those so that we can address them. And when it comes time to vote on any components of this moving forward, the full council votes on it, just like any other committee.
Well, I'm, I'm not comfortable with it.
Well, I'm sorry that you're not comfortable with that.
So I move, I move at this time that the public safety committee be dissolved effective immediately.
I second it. Further discussion? And I don't think we can just dissolve a committee either.
I, I don't know, that's a new one.
Well, the council has, the full council has the authority to create committees and...
I don't think it can just be dissolved.
The charter says the mayor shall, subject to the approval of the city council...
Yes, and it was already approved and voted on for this year.
...appoint all council committees.
Yeah, so next year, we could vote to not have it.
And determine the duties of sec committees and so...
Yeah, so next year, if you would like to do that.
The authority of the council to appoint a committee that gives the council the ability and the authority to dissolve a committee. And that's what I'm moving, that's what I, that's what I would like to happen.
I think the committees are for the year that they are appointed. And then next year, if this council does not want that committee to continue, then that's when you, when you take it out of there.
Just like we discussed that for the airport committee and some of those committees back in January, before we decided not to have them.
Yeah, I, I believe we have the authority to dissolve.
I do not believe we do.
If we wish to.
So there's nothing that says that the committee can take it out? And there's nothing in there that says that we, we can or we can't, correct?
No, either way. But they're, they're done for a year.
So there's something in there that says that we can't?
There's nothing in there that said that you can dissolve it.
And there's nothing in there that says that we can't?
No, but they are, but they are listed in there for the year. When we do those, they're for a year.
It states that in the bylaws?
Yes. Yeah. And then at the end of the year, when the new council starts, then you can...
And that's why we did, we got rid of the airport committee and some of the committees we deemed no longer necessary in January, before we established the committees. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just say again, I don't think there's anything in the charter that prevents us from dissolving a committee if we find it no longer, no longer needed or desired. And that's what I'm proposing.
I agree with you. I think we all need to have our eyes on this.
Well, what I was gonna say on that before he brought up dissolving it is, I agree that I think we should be writing down our questions, looking at our concerns to see what we want to do, but I don't think that necessarily we should throw them at Penny because she's not the architect. I think that we should come up with all our questions, all our concerns, and maybe set up a time that we can zoom in with Ellen or Rob or somebody and ask these questions then, together as a council, and get our questions and our concerns taken care of.
Absolutely.
Penny is not the architect and it's really not up to her to be able to say we don't...
I don't think we're asking her questions for her to give us legit answers. We're asking questions to ask questions, for them to be raised when they need to be raised.
Right, that's what we're trying to compile those, so we can do that in an efficient way. To, to say to the folks at Artifacts, here are the questions and concerns that have been brought up by the council. Can you please help us answer these? Rather than just piecemeal here and there.
So the next time you have that meeting with them, is the council, the whole council involved?
We can do that.
You can, anybody can.
That would be great.
They usually have a meeting, they'll usually have a meeting here during the council meeting.
They've had a couple, they've come to a couple of our meetings already.
Yeah, I remember them coming once.
It might have been before you were on council, Jennifer, but they've come a couple of times.
They've been up here or they've zoomed several times.
Since I've been on, they've come once.
Yeah.
And there's just one, oh, there's a point, just recently or last year or two, as we started following the charter and voting on the committees at the beginning of the year, because we were just, there was a point, the mayor, whoever, it doesn't matter, was just making the list of, here it is.
Yeah.
And then we found out later, well, this really shouldn't be voted on. So we weren't following it there either, but... So it is possible for us to have a meeting and invite the whole council? And it would be, if it was just a workshop, so to speak?
Yeah, anybody...
Well, we can just have a meeting where it's on the agenda that Artifacts comes in and, and... But again, it would be nice if we had the questions ahead of time for them to be able to have the answers for us.
Maybe it would be useful to get clarification on what the purpose of the committee is at this point in time, because it's not clear to me. And I, I prefer, for a project this size, I prefer to have a direct line to our manager, as we all should have, to ask questions and not to have to go through a filter of a committee to get to the manager, to get to the artifact, artifact.
You don't have to.
To get to artifacts.
So we can...
So what's the purpose of the committee? If they're not the ones gathering the questions and passing them off to the manager, why do we need a committee? We all have an email address that we can send our questions to Penny and get answers.
Madam Mayor, first off, okay, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna kind of answer that question. First off, okay, the committee, when we meet, nine times out of 10, we've met with Artifacts directly, okay? Penny isn't the one, we're not sitting in our meeting like we do at a city council meeting. Okay, Penny, go check this out, go check that out, da-da-da. No, we're meeting directly with them. So the, actually, the filter, as you call it, okay, is a way to, to ensure that the line of communication is directly between the city in some shape or form, other than just one person who can be overwhelmed very easily. And a lot of times, nine times out of 10, in the line of communication, things get lost. I think that the committee, okay, we sat down and actually, look at the homework we've done. Look at the homework they've done, the time they've saved. Now, you may take offense to the part that you weren't directly involved in every aspect of this, okay? And now we're saying, okay, we're ready to bring this, okay? And this is where the questions come up, okay? So now what we're saying is, okay, you have questions, okay? Because we're getting close to making final decisions here, bring them up. Okay, so that way then, when we meet with Artifacts, these guys who are designers, then we can say, okay, this is what our, our council is looking at here, okay? And let's do it. We're trying to save steps, I guess, okay? The more steps you have in the way, the more complicated it gets.
See, to me, that's an extra step. To me, I'd rather have...
It's not an extra step.
But we don't, I don't see it that way.
No, I don't see it that way.
I don't think you guys should be meeting with Artifacts without all of us here.
You can.
We can, we can.
We just said we would do that. We would have them come to a meeting. That's not a problem.
But, John, you just said you've met them on numerous occasions.
We have.
Yes, we have, as a committee.
As a committee.
In pre-design.
See, that's, that's problematic because the committee really doesn't have any authority to...
We're not voting on anything. We weren't voting on anything.
We weren't voting on nothing.
Well, let me ask you this.
We bring everything to the council for a vote, before anything actually takes place.
Okay, let's not get excited.
Well, right, exactly.
So what I'm saying is, I think the, the committee has been in a role that to provide guidance...
Correct.
...in direction to Artifacts.
Right.
Speaking on behalf of the council...
Correct.
...and the city.
Right.
All correct and all wrong.
All wrong.
The committee cannot do that. The committee cannot speak for the council and the committee cannot speak for the city.
We were just asking for direct, we weren't making specific changes, what we... Okay, Madam Mayor, I make a motion and we table this matter until another meeting?
We have a motion on the table. We have to vote on.
Okay.
Let's get through that first.
Okay, let's do it.
Yep. Bagley?
Then we can go on. I...
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Moral?
No.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
No.
No. Motion carries. I would like to double check, though, in the charter to see if that's actually something that can be done. And if not, we're coming right back to the table with it next time.
All I'm gonna say is, good luck.
Well, I feel this is going to work a lot better. I think that communications among the council are gonna be better and we're all gonna be more fully engaged and fully informed, so to me, that's a good...
Who's the leader? Who's gonna be the leader here on the finishing up this project?
We have appointed the manager to execute this contract on the city's behalf. We've given her that authority. Remember, we voted to sign, for her to sign it? And in my view, she is the manager of the project on our behalf.
You think that's fair to her?
And that's her job. And our job is to provide guidance to her and express the wishes of the city so that she can execute the contract. I think it'll work a lot better and reduce the risk of the project.
Reduce the risk? I don't think there's any risk.
I don't think there was any risk at all.
No, there was none at all.
And I think the committee worked very hard to make sure of that.
We're about a year and a half into a project, a design project, that was supposed to last 24 weeks. How do you explain that?
We explain that by knowing that there's paperwork that has to be done, congressionally-directed funding. There were certain steps that we had to follow, paperwork that had to be completed, testing that had to be done. Then we had to work on the design plans.
We get behind. And I'm just worried that we're gonna continue to get behind and we're gonna continue to run into problems like this where we have a design that's moving forward that a lot of us have some serious issues with.
That's what we're saying. So bring them forward. Let's discuss them.
It doesn't have anything to do with the committee.
You make it sound as though it's like some cult thing going on here, that we're trying to hide things and some secretive thing here, da-da-da, which it was not that way.
Yeah, I don't...
I take great offense.
I don't wanna dwell on the past.
But I, I'm done with this.
I don't wanna dwell on the past, I wanna look forward.
I'm done with this.
I want this project to be successful.
Done with this.
It was successful.
And I wanna do my best to help the city and the rest of the council.
So are you insinuating no one else is doing their best to do that? Councilor Bagley?
I'm not saying that at all.
Sounds like you are.
Well...
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we move on.
We've been seated, any further discussion? Let's vote on that. Bagley?
What are we voting on?
To move on.
We're tabling the matter, the rest of the matter with the police station concept until a later date.
Bagley?
So the discussion is ending? You need a two-thirds vote to end this, end debate? So, anyway, I'm fine moving forward, so I'll vote, I'll vote aye to move on.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Moral?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Yep.
Aye. Motion carries. Boys or boys? All right, item number 10A. We have the results of the June 11, 2024 state primary in the RSU 39 budget validation. Election results on page 45. I'm not gonna go through the whole results there, we have them in our packets. However, just to mention that, anybody interested in running for any seats, the seats that are available for this year, upcoming will be two three-year term seats for the city council, one three-year, uh, three-year term seat for the Eastern Aristic RSU 39 board and one three-year term seat for the Jefferson-Carry Memorial Hospital Fund. Anyone who would like to hold an elected position must be a registered voter in Caribou and must have nomination papers signed by at least 25 other registered Caribou voters. Those papers will be available in the city clerk's office beginning July 28, 2024, and the deadline to return nomination papers is before 4:30 PM on September 6, 2024. Okay. Item 10B, approval of a peddler's and hawker's license for Troy Reynolds DBA renewal by Anderson. This is on pages 46 through 50 of your packets.
This is, well, before I make a motion, this is just a... Application is presented, this, this wasn't done administratively, this had to come to council.
It requires council permission for the charter.
Oh, okay. Let's make a motion that we accept the peddler's application as presented for a term of 30 days for Troy Reynolds doing business, renewal by Anderson.
Second, moved and seated, discussion?
I tripped up on the fact that he, he says that he, he says specifically he wants to go door-to-door, doing door-to-door sales, and the ordinance specifically prohibits door-to-door sales. I don't understand why this is in front of us right now, because it should have been just declined because door-to-door sales are not required, are not allowed. Did I read something wrong?
They can go door-to-door, but they can't go in.
That's what a peddler's license is, is door-to-door, is it not?
Where's, where's that written? Where's that written?
Section 303, 7, that's what it is.
Right here.
They cannot go in the residences.
I want to look at that.
It's right here.
Oh, it's right here, yeah. In the middle of the application.
Okay.
It's on page 47, Councilor Bagley.
And 40, bottom of 49 is 303, I see. The practice of going in and upon private residences. And 47 is, okay, that's that.
Do you have any questions, Councilor Bagley?
I just had that one. I think I'm satisfied with that.
Perfect. Anyone else have questions?
If I'm reading it right.
Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Moral?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, reports and discussion by mayor and council members?
No, we got 10C on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was trying to skip that.
We'd like to skip it.
I was trying to skip that one.
We have in years past, like in the end of July.
Yes, correct. 10C, resolution to the 2024 series establishing the 2024 property tax rates and related deadlines.
I will say that the chart at the bottom of the resolution, I think I must have got interrupted, because everything is correct on page 52, where it has the different changes, but for some reason, they did not get changed in that, or I changed them and then forgot to save it or something. But Danielle does have the right one.
So, what's different from what I'm looking at?
So, the correct numbers are on page 52, under number seven, where it says changes to revenue lines there.
Line seven is...
Right.
Sure, that'd be great.
But it still requires motions individually, individualized.
Yeah, yeah. And again, like, I realize you're just seeing this. I literally was entering Betty exemptions Friday morning at 10:00.
Those are all the options.
So, before we get into this, I want to ask a question. Did, you know, you had sent us an email with a number of department underruns, and only two of those underruns are included in this proposal. Is there a reason why the other underruns were not included?
I didn't put, for salaries, you mean?
Just for salaries. That's all you gave us.
Because some of those are dependent on the time of year, you know, what they have for salaries. Like, so, for example, Public Works, they may be under today, but if it starts snowing in September, they may not. Things like, the two that I suggested, which was general government and assessing, those were vacant because we didn't fill a position. Do you know what I'm saying? But like...
Police and fire don't have empty positions?
Well, fire had one for a short time, but they're full now.
They're full now, yeah.
But, and again, I mean, theirs is, sometimes they have a lot of overtime, different times of the year, or... Fire, I mean, excuse me, police does have open positions and...
I'd really like to sweep all of those underruns, if we have, if we can get a better idea of what they are, because there's a lot to be saved in doing that.
Well, again, I mean, our charter says we need to set the tax rate by the end of June. That's one of the things I think is maybe unreasonable. Like, a city this size, other cities don't try to get all of their numbers done by the end of June to have a council set a mill rate. Now, if things, if it was such that we were in a position that we were not changing the tax rate, that's one thing. I mean, and, no, I had estimated based on the city budget that was accepted, the...
School?
School and the county, that the mill rate would be like 22.35. And indeed, if you made no changes, that would be perfect. But I did offer some suggestions. But if you think that there needs to be other things in there, I would say get a list of those together. We can, I can, I can do projections with that. I can't do it here at this meeting. But it's things I can do and send to the council if you want to wait until July. I mean, this is a big decision this year because it's a big jump. Any way you want to slice it, this is a big jump.
After a big jump last year.
And we have, we have a lot of taxpayers who had theirs frozen last year. So, we have...
They're unfrozen this year.
Correct. Yeah, so. But it's up, it's up to you what you decide to do. I'm just saying.
There were...
Did I hear you say, Councilor Bagley, you wanted to sweep the police department money into that also?
Whatever current salary underruns that we can afford to basically save in this final budget, I think, yes, that's what I'd like to do. All right, I mean, we're this far in the year, we're halfway through the year, and so much money hasn't been spent. It won't be spent. It can't be spent between now and the end of the year. So, let's sweep it now and give tax relief to the taxpayers. Makes sense to me.
Are there other things that you want me to look at and get back to the council?
There were a number of recommendations that the manager made back in March that never got considered or voted upon by the council and not, and I don't believe it ever ended up into the budget. And so, I kept track of those and there's, you know, three or four of them that I'd like to revisit, as well as there were a number of, I guess we'll call it excessive requests, way above and beyond what the 2023 actual was, that I'd like to revisit. I have a list and I can certainly provide it. But it's up to the council in terms of what they want to do tonight with this. But I think there's still a lot to be saved. We haven't looked hard enough.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we table this matter until after Penny's had a chance to look at Councilor Bagley's and anybody else's recommendations that they have that we could discuss at our July meeting, which I know will be out of line with the charter. But in order to compensate for everybody and appease everybody, I think it might be the appropriate thing to do.
What about these, I know there's some other ideas here, but can we vote at least on these reductions tonight possibly?
I think we should do it all in one.
Do it all in one. Yeah, do it all in one.
And then you can kind of pick and choose that way, too, you know? But I would just like to go on record that the assessing office had their stuff done.
Yeah.
So, I would like that to be noted in the record. The tax assessment had their values ready, so.
Another suggestion I might make is to call a special meeting for July 9. If we want to do that, we can get to their...
I'm not available July 9.
I'm not either, actually.
Or any other date. But that may squeeze Penny too much, so...
Well, if I mean, if I have a date, I can work towards a date. Oh, yeah.
Not a good time.
Yeah, I'm just not available that.
Some are not a good time.
Then there's nothing else on that.
Are there any other dates in that vicinity that would work?
Well, what if we...
Anything works for me.
Could we move up our one meeting for the month of July to, say, July 15?
Yeah.
And have that one meeting?
That would be fine. Yeah, Danielle is not here then.
I'm not here. I'm not here on July 15. But, you know, you could do it on a non-Monday too.
Right, or the 16th.
And just keep this, keep this as a...
Right.
This is it.
Well, why don't we do this then? Why don't we give, everybody submit their suggestions to Penny, okay? Then let her give her chance to work on it. I've seen this how she's going to have a bunch of other work to do now. And then, once she gets everything kind of finalized, then she can let us know, then we can pick a date from there, whether it's the 15th, 16th.
Or it just ends up going to the same meeting date that we already scheduled.
Exactly, yeah.
At this point, I mean...
Yeah.
You said the 9th.
Yeah.
9th doesn't seem to be good for people, the 15th. Danielle's gone that week.
Yeah, Danielle's gone the 15th, and Jennifer's gone.
The 22nd, which is our meeting, yeah.
Which is her.
So, is there a problem with just waiting until our July meeting? Is there a problem there?
No.
Then let's just do it then.
You don't need a motion.
No. Well, we need a motion to table it until the next meeting. But he already came in. Moved into seconded. Further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Moral?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, we can do reports and discussion by mayor and council members. Let's start with Councilor Bagley this evening.
No, thanks. I'll sit.
Councilor Lovewell?
I have nothing.
Councilor Smith?
Nothing to do. Oh, but, have you ever, well, you'll email us on the time for municipal buildings?
Yes.
So, okay, that's the only thing I had to...
Haven't heard back from John yet.
Okay, I think time's really good for me. Just let me know on that.
Absolutely.
That's all I have to say.
Deputy Mayor? Councilor Kelly?
I'm all set.
Councilor Moral?
Nothing at this time, except I'd like to put a big shout out to our local PD officers who helped fill in during this time of this strain that we're going through. I'm thinking that what these men are doing, especially in light of recent events that have happened in our community, in our surrounding community here, I think they deserve a true hat's off. Not saying that anybody else doesn't. I also would like to say another shout out to the Public Works Department for the work they're doing behind the fire station, rectifying the lots out there. I think it's really, really good. It's going to make a huge difference. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, our next regular meeting will be on July 22, 2024. We have an executive session on the agenda on item 13, executive session for union negotiations pursuant to 1 MRSA, section 405, 6D.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we go an executive session for the union negotiations pursuant to 1 MRSA, chapter 405, dot 6, dot A, regards to police department union.
Second. Motion in seconded. Discussion. Bagley?
No.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.